Okay.
Happy to still be.
It is the hour of seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of May 27, 2020. As we start every meeting, I'd like to remind you this is being recorded and it's also being broadcast live, so please keep that in mind. On the agenda report, it's come to my attention that I also should read this meeting is being held fully remote in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts, March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, small c, 30a, section 20. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
It stands.
Nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Justice.
Justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. Okay, an entertaining motion to accept the minutes of May 13.
Bob, can you do roll call, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Roll call. Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Rob O'Brien. Robbie. Chris Scriven. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Evening.
Yes.
Yes.
Love Hayes. Yes, okay. Thank you, everyone. An entertaining motion to accept the minutes of May 13, 2020.
So moved by Dan.
Second by Ally.
The Small will second.
You get that, Michelle?
Yeah, I'll take it, Ally.
End of discussion. Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, Robbie says, Robbie's here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Just joined us.
I cried out.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Ally Taylor.
Yes.
Love Hayes. Yes. Okay. Date of motion to accept the minutes of May 18, 2020.
Mr. Small make that motion.
And Ally will second.
Discussion.
Chair Hayes.
Chair, go ahead. Go ahead, Dawn.
I have question for clarification on page four of these minutes.
Uh, do you want me to read your email?
You could. I'll just point out before, yes, um, do you want to read the email?
It's go ahead. Oh, go ahead. You can do it.
So the paragraph halfway down that begins with the superintendent reported there was discussion, um, the fourth line down, the sentence begins right after the 1991 RA. So the sentence says, "The proposed amendment was reviewed and is legal and is also contingent upon both member towns voting in the affirmative on the amended agreement and the operating budget." Clarification where it says, "And the operating budget," as it relates to the email from Christine Lynch, and if we need to table the minutes until we get to further discussion, I'm okay with that, because I understood from another memo that the amendment and the budget were tied together, or that you had, if the amendment was approved, but the budget is not, then the district must use the amendment for other budgets.
If you want to answer that.
I would rather table it until I get to the 112 piece, because I have to present about the effects of a 112 budget. So if we want to table that, I'd be, I'd rather answer it there than answer it in this and then review that again.
And a motion to table it till further in the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
No move.
Ally will second.
Discussion. Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Love Hayes, yes. Do not let me forget to vote on it when we get to that update on, um, what you're talking about, Jeff.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're up. Superintendent.
A brief update on the end of the year process. So June 15 is our last day of official school. Yay, we're finally getting there. I'm sure a lot of parents are excited to not be homeschooling or remote learning. Um, all the buildings right now have teachers on a staggered schedule cleaning out their room and preparing student belongings for pickup next week. The high school had a very successful pickup today of senior belongings and transcripts and all there are there things that they get prior to graduation, and they also got their caps and gowns yesterday and today in preparation for the senior parade, which will be held at 1:30 on Friday afternoon in the C in the high school parking lot. If you can get out there with your mask, that would be great to wave our seniors goodbye. The other buildings, um, the pickup for children's belongings is next week. Uh, so parents will be coming to get their whatever's in their child's desk, locker, et cetera, next week, um, and returning anything that they have. Uh, it's less at the elementary levels, textbooks and things than at the middle and high, the middle and high, the, uh, and for the high school, freshman sophomores and juniors be delivering or dropping their things off next week as well. Uh, end of the year celebration, Hanson Middle is going to do a parade, um, which was approved by Hanson Board of Selectmen and Hanson DPH, uh, similar to the high school parade, uh, which is taking place on Friday for their eighth graders. Whitman Middle is doing something very similar, uh, for their eighth graders, and I'm not really sure the date. Um, I might, uh, George, what's the date on that? You're muted, George. I can't hear you. You're muted, George.
It's also June 12 in the morning. They spoke to Kevin Harrington, who spoke to Officer Bomberdear, who cleared up the police department because, um, they're confident that all the traffic will be on the premises and off the roads.
Thanks, George. So closing is, is, is in process. Um, right now we have our maintenance crew of SJ Service is still on sabbatical. Um, they're not in the buildings. We have our maintenance crew assisting staff in removal of trash or anything that needs to go out. They're fully covered in, in PPE. Uh, so we brought our college kids back to, to help out, um, and defer the cost of SJ for, for this month. Uh, SJ is probably not coming back till July 1st, as we'll use our maintenance crew and our college crew to clean up the buildings and start to prepare if we do have an extended school year or summer school program in district. Uh, we were on a phone call with the commissioner today, and that's TV determined from the commissioner's office. Guidance will be coming out next week if we can actually have a summer school program or an extended school year program for our special education students. So that's TV determined. Um, but we are in the process of, of closing up shop, uh, from this unusual year, um, for June 15. Chromebook drop off for all that have borrowed Chromebooks in district, I believe is the 11th and 12th, uh, Thursday and Friday, the 11th and 12th. We're fully assuming that really there's, there's can be very little remote learning taking place on the 11th and 12th, and the last final school days is June 15, that Monday. That's what I have. Any questions on the end of the year?
Jeff, the parade that's on Friday at the high school is at 1:30. Is that correct?
It's at 1:30. Correct.
Okay. And if members want to attend, they're invited.
Yep. I would, uh, if you want to attend, I would just ask maybe shoot Chris, Dr. Jones, an email so he can find a spot for you, because he's got everybody in place appropriately six feet apart from each other. So he can find a spot for you. That's not a problem. But, uh, if you just show up, I, he's gonna have to scramble to put you someplace. So just shoot him an email and he'll, he'll plug you in.
Everybody got that?
Chris Scriven has a question. Chris?
Yeah. Uh, so Jeff, could you repeat the, uh, pickup, uh, for clean out at the high school for nine, 10, and 11?
Off the top of my head, it's, it's next week sometime. I don't have that scheduled.
I thought you said the other schools. Okay, thank you.
The other schools, the other school, George can jump in. He's got it.
George, go ahead.
The high school pickup for underclassmen will be the week of the 8th to the, to the 12th. So that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday will be underclassmen at the high school. Uh, Chris has put it out. It's on his video, and then that would leave the Thursday and Friday for whole district Chromebook pickup. Jason Cook from our tech department is handling that, but Chris Jones will, who obviously has a gift for the, uh, camera, will be the one who, um, who solidifies those details next week for that last week.
Thanks, George.
Anyone else? Continue, Jeff.
Thanks. So the next piece is really about going into a 112 budget. I know Hanson had moved their town meeting to July 20th, uh, but we have to submit, or we had to, we have to submit a budget, um, to the commissioner, uh, for, for him to purview a 112 by Monday, June 1. So we were going through this process anyway. Um, the fact that we won't have a budget until July actually puts it into reality that we will fall into a 112, but we have to submit a proposal, uh, for our operating budget for fiscal 21 for the commissioner by June 1. If we didn't have a budget, if we don't have a budget by July 1, the commissioner will then assign us a 112 budget. And because of now, we do have a, a town meeting scheduled because of COVID-19 in July, we will start to operate the month of July in a 112 budget. So getting back to Dawn's question a little bit, there's, there's quite a, there's a process in place, and the normal process in place for a regional school district that doesn't have a budget by June 1, um, it's few and far between. Uh, it's a couple of school districts in the Commonwealth. However, this year, um, 150 school districts will not have a budget, or regional school districts won't have a budget by next Monday because virtually no town meetings have taken place. So the commissioner is going to get, uh, quite a few. All of us are submitting a document, a new form they created on a 112 budget, which John Tuffy filled out today. So that's going to be submitted. Uh, I will submit that to the school committee, uh, when we submit it to, to DESI. On top of that, and this might help you, Dawn, as well, um, I'm going to draft a letter to the commissioner explaining the process that we've gone through this year to approve a vote. Sometimes the school committee or a school district says, well, we're arguing over the budget figure. Uh, one town wants to pay this much, and the, and the one town wants the district to lower the budget. Um, they're not arguing an assessment methodology, so to speak. So I'm going to write a letter to the commissioner explaining the process of the methodology, statutory or agreement, because up until this year, we haven't checked the correct box anyway. So that needs to be clarified with the commissioner. On top of that, in the letter that Christine Lynch wrote to us, there's no room in this, in this document that John is sending to talk about a compromise of an amendment that is submitted by the regional school committee. I have to explain the compromised amendment that is under proposal as well. Christine Lynch's email has a line in it that when we, I gave it to you last Monday, we talked about this document being legal and moving forward. It also seeks the approval of the commissioner, and if the commissioner approves the amendment and the budget fails, the agreement or the amendment to that agreement is the way he would then, um, assess a 2021 budget. Okay? Traditionally, if it's a 112 budget for 2020, for 21, he would use a strict statutory method. When Christine Lynch said, if both towns approve the amendment to the agreement at town meeting and don't approve a budget, and we have to go into a 112, he will look at that amendment agreement and assess based upon the amendment. However, in my language, in my letter to the commissioner, I'm going to clarify that both towns have worked on the agreement in, in, in not so much to get a budget passed. Um, I think, and then I would assume he would have a conversation before setting forth a 112, uh, uh, budget for us, based upon the conversations that we've had statutory versus agreement and taking into account the amendment that was proposed by the school committee. I don't, and, and for him to, um, agreements or this amendment to the agreement to pass, he has to approve that. So it does bring into a, a question, if we move into a 112, and if the commissioner does have to assign a, an agreement or, uh, uh, assign a method of assessing the 112 budget, would he use the amendment to our agreement, or would he just use statutory, which is required, which is in all the DESI regs, that if you're in a 112 budget, you would use strict statutory? So again, I'm going to have to write a letter, kind of a, a description of the process, because he asked for a description of your process of attaining a budget, and I have to clarify with him in that letter that the school committee passed a budget out of committee based upon an, an amendment to our current regional agreement. Please ask me questions if it, if you have questions on that, because it, it's challenging. It's the first time I'm going through a 112 process, but it is a caveat in the letter that she wrote, if you do not have a, if you have an agreement to the amendment passed by both that meeting, and if you don't have a budget, and the commissioner approves that agreement, or that amendment, that he would use the new methodology that was school committee to assess the 2020 112 budget, or the 2021 112 budget. So I see George's hand up.
Yeah. In essence, the ability, sorry.
Go ahead, Judge, then Fred.
Because the school committee put forth a budget last week, it does give another option that we can now present to the commissioner to say, this is what we've tried. This is all that we've done. That's why I think, you know, I'm going to say thank you to, to the committee for this, because it was, getting that out there allows us to at least speak to it in case you go to the 112. It might not be strictly 112. He now has more to work with, and that's the key that was in Christine Lynch's email.
Fred was next. Go ahead, Fred.
My, my, my question is, if the towns reject the amendment, and there is no amendment, how can the commissioner use, how can the commissioner use that? I mean, granted, the commissioner can do whatever he wants, but how can he use that as a methodology? I understand he can set a budget, and the budget he would set would be based upon statutory, but how use the methodology in something that the towns don't approve of?
The only way he would use that methodology is if both towns approved the amendment and just, and didn't approve the budget. If both towns, if one town doesn't approve the method, the, the agreement or the amendment, he's using statutory. That's the fault.
Okay, and that's, and I thought you had said that by having the amendment, he was going to use the amendment, not that the towns had to approve the amendment. I just.
Only if the towns approve the amendment. Yeah, only if they approve, that, that was, that was the gist of Dawn's question. If they approve the amendment, but don't approve the budget, and then the commissioner approves the amendment, that's the methodology he will use. But in my letter, I want to say dissertation to the commissioner, I will explain the process that we've come to this amendment, and I think it was a, a means to an end to move a budget, which we needed to get out of school committee, so he could actually see a fiscal 2021 budget from the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District.
Dawn. Dawn.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. That does make sense, and I'm repeating what Fred just said and yourself, but in my mind, I have to think, so school committee approved the amendment. If both towns like the amendment and approve it, but then they don't like the budget number, the amendment carries. So that's what we've all, if the three of us, meaning the district, we, you know, I'm sorry, school committee approved it, both towns approve it, that will carry through to maybe another budget number if, if don't like the budget number.
I think it'll allow him to use it in his decision-making ability. He doesn't have to, but it'll allow him to be able to.
Right.
Do we also, we also have to vote on the methodology?
Um, my other question, Jeff, was have you had a chance to talk to other regional school districts, how they're handling this? Because, um, with our towns, um, we have the assessment topic here, but the 112 at this point, it's really related to coronavirus, which you had said, because we're not having, able to have a town meeting due to the restrictions. Um, so could you just share if you've heard from other, how, uh, regional school districts, how they're handling their 112?
So we have a conference call with Jay Sullivan on, on, on Friday from DESI at noon to talk strictly 112 with regional school districts. So up until last Thursday night, uh, we didn't have the form to fill out from DESI. So we got the form Thursday night. John worked on it Tuesday, and he sent it to me, uh, this morning. We looked at it today. So I haven't had the opportunity to speak to other regional school districts, uh, and that impact. The only thing that's been consistently said on every conference call with DESI is that the commission, that a 112 budget is not, um, is not good for, for, it's going to hurt any district. Um, I don't know where town meetings are at in other communities right now, uh, and I don't know how deep they're going to have to go into 112. The last conversation we've had with the commissioner and with, with, uh, finance from DESI is that most towns are going into a 112 budget, so their school districts are actually in a 112 as well, and that's a new mechanism for them. Um, the town in Norwell is in a 112 for next year right now until they have town meeting, because they don't have an approved budget. So that's a new thing for them. I don't know, I don't want to say, uh, sound ignorant, but I don't know what others are doing right now. Uh, we'll be on that conference call with Jay Sullivan again on Friday, specifically about 112, uh, as, as we're required to send them that form and that information. Um, but it has been consistently said that the goal would be for towns to have, once they have town meeting, we are in a unique situation because we were having difficulty with an assessment methodology and, and getting a budget out. The other towns are just waiting for their, their town meeting, um, to come to fruition.
Fred, you, before we go to you, Dawn, Fred had a question about methodology. We got cut off. Go ahead, Fred.
Well, no, and I, and I spoke over Dawn. I apologize. I let her finish.
Okay, go ahead, Dawn.
Are you able to accept comments from school committee members for this submission? Um, my suggestion, um, because we know what happened in 2019 at town meeting last year. So our FY 20 budget, as we've talked about, um, really was cut very badly. So I guess that would be my comment to add to the commissioner. If there's a, another line to include the fact that working off of an FY 20 budget, it, it was decimating already to our schools. So.
From what, from what I'm understanding, the commissioner is going to stick with 2020, um, numbers, because it, it's, there's, it's going to be overwhelming for him to, to do one thing for one town and not the other. But that, I will see if I can clarify that on, on Friday on our conference call.
Or, or just to include that our towns at that time at town meeting were in financial crisis. They were telling our school district, you need to cut. We, we have a revenue problem. We heard that at town meeting for several years, and that's what was forced upon school committee last spring. Um, so I think that message is important, that that was a result of, you know, we already cut 19 positions last year. So that's where we're, our starting point is. Thank you.
Fred, thank you.
And, and in, in view of, uh, being completely transparent, uh, we'll also, I believe, have a separate vote for the methodology for each town, you know, to accept the, uh, agreement or alternative method, uh, for this year's budget, as well as the amendment. We have to do both, don't we?
I'm understanding that the, the amendment to the agreement is determining your methodology.
But doesn't, doesn't it stipulate that if you're using anything but statutory, you have to approve the method that you're doing it? And then I know they have a sentence after that to make it more confusing, saying that acceptance of the budget constitutes acceptance of the method.
Okay. So that's, that, so my understanding, because we're, we're using the agreement method with a compromise attached to it, that's presented. So the, the amendment to the agreement is determining the method of assessment, which is really the agreement or the, our agreement method.
Can you clarify that, Jeff? Could Fred bring up a valid point?
Sure.
When you talk to him tomorrow?
Sure.
Anyone else?
So I have more. Go ahead.
Chris Howard, you got your fit? Okay.
So, so I just wanted to, I wanted to clarify that piece for Dawn, so we didn't forget that piece, because I think it's an important piece. Um, so as we crafted the 112 piece, because it is, it is a reality, and I'm crossing my fingers that, uh, that, uh, we do have a budget that was approved by the school committee, but, uh, in a sense, uh, as of July 1, we're operating under what the commissioner gives us, under fiscal control of the state. Um, and I have to, or we have, have to let teachers know of the potential cuts, uh, if in August, we can't make payroll of our existing staff. So, uh, Mr. Tuffy gave me the number of our last 2020 budget was 52,425,738. Um, and we were asking for 55,04238. Um, so we have to get by July 1 to that 52,425 number. So as I sent to you in your packet on Tuesday, um, and I actually did a video conference or a video for our staff to let them know where we were, um, before I presented this publicly to you, because it affects them and their position, we have to cut close to $2.6 million of, uh, to, to make, to make salary for our teachers, um, if they return in August 24th for our date, if we're under fiscal control of the state in August. So just simply put publicly, and I know that you have this document, um.
Everybody. If everybody had the document, whether it's electronically or paper.
Okay. So looking at, at taking an average of $65,000 for a teacher's salary, we're eliminating our eight reading specialists in the district. We're eliminating five teachers at Hanson Middle School. We're eliminating three teachers at Conley Elementary.
Jeff, for a moment, can I butt in? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Would you please attach, would you back up to the eight reading specialists and just attach the amounts? So do you have that?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, so eight reading specialists is about, is $550,000. Five teachers at Hanson Middle School is $325,000. Three teachers at Conley is $195,000. Three teachers at Indian Head is $195,000. Two teachers at Duval is $130,000. Two facilities positions is $120,000. Our five high school curriculum directors will go back into their classrooms, but they will lose their, lose their stipends to the tune of $90,000. They used to evaluate and teach part-time. There will only be two evaluators in the high school next year, the principal and the assistant principal. Um, we made a, a switch today with the high school principal. Uh, we will not be looking at a high school secretary, but we will be looking, and so all down, we're looking at two librarians in the district, so high school librarian and the middle school librarian at Hanson Middle. The four library pairs at $80,000. The two librarians are 130, I'm sorry. The high school after-school program, uh, the staff will be cut to the tune of $65,000. We're projecting no freshman athletics, uh, all year next year for the tune of $70,000. We still don't know if we're going to have fall sports, but there will be no freshman sports offered, um, if there are, uh, fall, winter, or spring, and we're adding five high school positions instead of four, uh, to the tune of $320,000. Then we're looking at a, a balance of approximately $350,000. We'll cut some supply lines, and we will cut non-union-based administrators. That gets us to close to 2, 2.6 million dollars. So tune of two, of 39 positions, give or take, where we're at, this is a, a rough estimate, as we don't know what the. This is a, a rough estimate as we don't know what the commissioner is going to give us for a budget. But we have to notify our staff, our, our teaching staff of potential cuts by May thirty-first. Kevin, Cindy, George and I spoke, we spoke with the principals. Right now, our, our notification, our RIF notifications are going to all of our non-PTS staff. And we're down into staff hired in two thousand fifteen, sixteen and two thousand seventeen, eighteen. So we're going five years in, three years of non-PTS and two years of PTS. When we first did this, George and I thought we might have to go to, to year seven because we have to make sure that our reading specialists and other cuts, people in our professional teacher status can bump into positions of, that are held by non-professional status teachers. Those letters will be going out on tomorrow afternoon or Friday to the staff. The principals have been notified, they will get a hard copy tomorrow, and Kevin and Cindy will as well. This was not, this is two years in a row that we've gone through this process. The challenge with this process is last year, when we were cutting the budget, we were cutting the budget and they were hard numbers to get to a number that the school committee put out to the town. Right now, as I said to George today, I said on July twentieth, on July twenty-first, we possibly can be hiring four additional to our staff, or we could be laying off forty teachers to our staff. It depends on if the towns, both towns approve the budget and the amendment and where we go. The budget presented by the school committee added those four staff members. So it was, I'm, I'm very conflicted doing this because if we have a budget, no matter what that number is, I doubt it's going to be a one twelfth number. But we have to let staff know because there is a possibility that both towns don't approve our budget, don't approve the amendment. And, and by July twenty-first or come August first, we start budgeting our payroll. When the commissioner gives us our, our number for that month, it will have to include teaching staff as they return to school on the twenty-first. So July first is a target date for the commissioner to set us. But we don't pay our teachers in July. They're paid through this fiscal year, they're paid through the summer, through FY twenty-five. So they're good. But once we get into FY twenty-one, that first payment, I believe, is in, in, in August. So August first is a critical, critical number for us. All the dates are critical, all the numbers are critical, but this will really take into effect if, if we don't have a budget that comes out of either town. If, if Whitman doesn't pass the budget in June, we're at a one twelfth. If Hanson doesn't pass the budget in July, we're at one twelfth.
Before we go to Fred, and that is, Jeff, you're removing five high school positions, correct? I, I thought I heard you said adding.
Nope. So, so after speaking with Dr. Jones today, he, on my original list, there was a high school secretary position. He swapped the high school secretary position out for a high school position, a teaching position.
Okay. Fred, you had your hand up?
Yes. And Jeff, this, I mean, devastation. It's thirty-nine, forty positions roughly. Does that take into account unemployment, et cetera, or do you, are you going to need to go deeper?
I, I think right now, based upon, so that will depend. It will depend who we can bring back and, and it might have to go deeper. I don't think it's going to have to go deeper because that two point six is a little bit more than, than, than our twenty twenty numbers. Like in our, in our fiscal twenty-one budget, we asked for the, for the ELA program. In fiscal twenty-one, we actually added money for special education. We should be able to get by with unemployment with a two point six million dollar cut. So I don't anticipate going deeper. And hopefully, if we don't have to go into, into laying off, we won't be paying unemployment. So, so I think we're okay then.
And is a, if I could, a quick follow-up. Have we?
Then Mike Jones.
Have we looked at, have we looked at, you know, thinking outside the box, closing on Fridays per se? Or as you and I have had discussions about, you know, teams and one team? And I know you're waiting for guidance from the commissioner. But, you know, let's say we're back in session, so to speak. Could we add time on to a day? And granted, we'd have to talk to our teachers and probably bargain things. Add a little bit of time on to a day, but close a day and be able to realize some, you know, bus savings, maybe some utility savings, closing the schools for three days in a row type of thing. I don't know. I'm just, I think of anything to avoid devastation.
So usually we're thinking outside the box, but outside the box is even more outside the box after speaking with the commissioner today. And the amount of PPE that we're going to have to purchase for our schools, the devices we're going to have to purchase to take temperatures. Just for instance, he's recommending that schools, our middle schools, our middle schools and our, and our high school have a device that can take your temperature as you walk through, almost like a metal detector. They run about twenty-five hundred dollars, according to Timmy Grenow. We may have to purchase multiple of those. The amount of PPE that we're going to have to get for our teachers and our staff is, is going to be expensive. And the fact that we don't know if we're going to be able to have all our kids in our school during, during the day or if we're going to be splitting sessions or doing some remote learning. So outside the box, yeah, I, we're going to be all over outside the box. He said today, within the next two weeks, we will have guidance on what opening might look like next year. But our, George and my mouth dropped today listening to him about, just simply put, he said nurses will look like ER nurses with the gear that they're going to have to have, the face shields, the booties, the full nine yards. And that's going to have to be disposable and, and it's not going to be reused. So the amount of gear that's being projected is going to be expensive. And there is money in, in the CARES Act. However, the money in the CARES Act is, is being used to, to refund us some expenses, refund some of the PPE that we've already purchased. And we're also going to have to look at a remote learning plan that we're hoping to identify money in the CARES Act to be proactive and purchase more equipment for both our technology people and for our students. And actually some training for teachers so that we actually have a, a, a strong remote model for next year. That's going to cost some money. So I appreciate that, thinking outside the box, right? I know you and I have talked about transportation. The commissioner has been very quiet on what a bus might look like next year, too. I've heard numbers of eight to ten kids on a bus, do maybe fifteen with class shields up. I don't know what that's going to look like. And some of our, our elementary and our middle school buses are, are packed. So does that mean multiple bus runs? What's the expense on that? So we don't know that question yet, but it's something that we're looking at. I, I don't know what the commissioner is going to set for time on learning next year, what he's going to classify as remote. If we can get Fridays off, if we're a split schedule, not sure, but I, I appreciate the ideas and keep them coming. But the, the guy, everything we heard today was it, it, it's a process and you'll get guidance in the next couple of weeks. It's a process and you'll get guidance in the next couple of weeks. So if you read the Globe article this morning, it was, it was kind of scary. And, and the commissioner didn't, didn't enlighten us with, with more good news this afternoon.
As a matter of fact, I posted that this morning on social media. I do have a few follow-ups, but I know there's others waiting. I'll, you know, gladly wait.
Thanks, Fred. I got Mike Jones, Ally Taylor, and then Dan Cullody. Mike?
Yeah, Jeff, I understand next year is going to be unpredictable as ever budget-wise. But can you just explain how you came up with the teacher position cuts? Is it based on population? I noticed you have eight teachers just in Hanson alone versus five in Whitman, nothing to Whitman Middle School? Like, that's devastating to Hanson.
So, so right now.
Not that it isn't to Whitman, but.
All, all the, all the elementary class size, I just strictly looked at class size and put everybody between twenty-five and thirty. Whitman right now in their middle school is running between twenty-five and thirty. Hanson is not, they're running close to twenty, to twenty-two. So cutting, cutting anywhere in Whitman Middle and then this, it depends on how things flow, where people might move. But the elementaries were first, their, their pre-K, or not pre-K, excuse me, grades one through four at Indian Head and one through five at Conley and Duval are now between twenty-six and twenty-eight per class. The class size at Whitman Middle and at Hanson Middle are between twenty-five and thirty. And some classes at the high school will go over thirty with the cuts that they have. So it was, it was strictly looking at population and where we could reduce across the board.
In that, so the four added teachers that's off the board as part of this?
Well, yeah, because they're not in the FY twenty budget. So I'm strictly looking at the FY twenty budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ally?
I just had a thought about the PPE. I know Vo-Tec was doing something earlier over the summer, making, over the summer, rather, spring. I don't even know what time of year it is. They were making a bunch of the plastic face shields for, I think, Brockton Hospital. Is there something that maybe we can work out with them to maybe get some PPE at a less expensive, you know, cost to the district? I'm just kind of thinking about things.
Sure. The commissioner's, the commissioner's recommendations on PPE, George, what do you say? Coming out next week, middle of next week sometime?
Yeah, they're coming out the middle of next week. And the, the biggest issue they're having with PPE now is that there's so, the country doesn't have it nationally globally. It is the shortage right now. But you're looking at, we had to purchase some masks and they were going for five dollars a piece just so that our teachers and our workers could, could keep going. But yeah, we'll, we'll be willing to look at anything we need. The one good thing is that there are more companies that offer PPE now on the state bid list. The state bid list is the big consortium where you get things cheaper because so many schools, you know, all the schools are buying them. Anything from pencils to paper to now to include PPE. So hopefully, you know, we, we can get some of that. The biggest issue, too, is if we go remote learning or partial remote learning, is the technology hit. So you're looking at now beefing up your remote learning plan with added technology for staff and for students. And at the same time, increasing your PPE costs for the students who may or may not be in your thing, some days, every day, every other day, every other week. So really, right now, there's, there's still so many unknowns.
Hey, Bob, it's Rob, Brian. Can I jump in real quick for something for George?
Yeah, and then I've got to go to Dan. He's been patient.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not, I'm not on video. But George, could you call me tomorrow if you get a chance, just so we can talk about some of the PP stuff? Just so I can see if there's a wave that between Hanson Fire and Whitman Fire and maybe MEMA that we can try to help you out with some of it? Because MEMA has been helping out police and fire entities with it, whereas DPH has been handling all of the nursing homes and assisted loading facilities and those type of things. So maybe we can have an offline conversation just to see if we can at least try to streamline it for you to make it a little bit easier to, to get hold of the PPE that you need.
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great. Thank you.
I haven't.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Bob.
Ally, you still at it?
Yeah, just one more thing. I know that there are several companies around here that have 3D printers. I don't know if there's any way that maybe we can kind of ask for donations?
I, I think we're going to look at everything that we can. I just want to make sure that we're, we're hitting the standard of protection for our staff to make sure that they're comfortable with, with that. And I think that's where the guidelines are going to come in. And, and making sure that people that are coming to work are protected. And I'm not slouting, I, I think it was great with Vo-Tec did. It's, there's going to be a cost. I don't know if they're going to have the capability to do it because I don't know if they're going to be back in school either. It's just a lot of, lot of moving parts to that. And, and on our call today, it was the rush to, you know, you should order your PPE as soon as the guidelines come out. There is CARES money, we're looking at that. John Stanbrook, Frank Lineham, myself and John Tuffy had a conversation yesterday about Plymouth County money that we, we will be splitting up for reimbursements to the municipalities, including the regional district. So we're working together with both Whitman and Hanson to make sure that we get the appropriate money for our regional school district and that the municipalities have that opportunity to, to, to come up with a figure from us. We're meeting again on Tuesday at twelve-thirty to, to give, give them our numbers so far. George is working on the CARES Act money. I spoke to Chief Grenow today about FEMA money. And the only negative about FEMA money is he said it's two years out. So if we spend money or if we order money, we're probably looking at a two-year reimbursement from FEMA for anything that we're, we're spending. So, and I, I think that's part of our conversation that we had with John Stanbrook and with Frank Lineham yesterday about FEMA, Plymouth County, state money, and then Desi money.
Dan, thank you, Ally. Dan Cullody, then Don. I have a few things here. That was, the high school position was not going to be a secretary, but a teacher?
Correct.
And that's still sixty thou?
Yeah, it'd be sixty-five. So, yeah. Yep. Three twenty-five.
Okay. Now, the, I've read certain things because nothing's been released, but hearsay, busing, you know, they're gonna, if that comes out, we've read our, our already empty buses will have to be empty because, you know, sporadic, only one per row or something crazy like that. Will we have to abide by those rulings? See now, we don't have the buses filled anyways, is a way.
So the, the buses are really more empty at, at the high school. They're pretty full at both middle schools and the elementary school. So I don't know what that's going to look like for high school. One of the recommendations that the commissioner asked us today is we should survey our student population, our parents, to see if they would actually use buses next year. There, there were a lot of things thrown out there, like, you know, parent. One of the expectations is, is from the state is that parents are going to supply masks for their kids. All kids K to twelve are going to have masks. But we're going to have kids that aren't going to have masks or have masks that failed during the course of the school day. So we're going to have to have replacement masks for them. There's just a lot of, a lot of moving parts, Dan, the busing piece, the transportation piece. George, John and I have been racking our heads about what that looks like for transportation next year. Because whether the buses are full or not, if we put fifteen kids on a bus that normally seat sixty, that's four runs for that school. And I don't know how that's going to be doable. So the transportation piece is still out there. And again, the commissioner was talking about guidelines for transportation that are coming out in, in, in the, in the next couple of weeks.
You know, I only wanted to bring that one piece up because that, that's like one of those unknowns where we currently don't get reimbursement like we're supposed to, but will we do?
And that's going to get cut next year, too.
And expanded, it's going to be making it worse for the district.
Correct. We're looking at, I mean, John and I are expecting a cut in regional transportation and a cut in circuit breaker money for next year anyway. So because of, because of the revenue issues within the Commonwealth.
Yeah, so we're going to keep getting, digging, digging deeper and deeper. Part of that fiasco was classroom sizing. If they, not the schools, have a six-foot social distancing, can, I, I know that's impossible to open up a school unless you plan on going from seven in the morning to like eight at night because you'd have to double to triple your classes to accommodate some. Because our, our room's already overcrowded. There's no way those kids are going to fit in these circumstances, is there? Is that rumor coming to attrition or is that going to be automatic, remote if it does?
The commissioner, the commissioner did say that some of the guidance may look like, but not really be an alternate schedule, whether it's days, students, full staff, two on, three out, week on, week off. He didn't say that would be it. He didn't say anything was a definite, but he did say that guidance would suggest that issues of transportation and class size will be forthcoming in his guidance. That's all he kept saying. So he, he, he knows the issues and he hasn't yet officially.
He has no idea what he's doing.
Well, it's, it's a bad thing to be touching. I understand they don't want to. Here it is, April, May. Now we're going to be heading up to June. And it looks like they won't get their guidance out till probably July because they're going to get hit with so much paperwork. And then becomes August and we're stuck, the school's still unopened. So what do we do? Scramble around? One of the last things, Robbie kind of hit on it. One of my other concerns, what if we can't get the necessary supplies?
Yep. So what we're trying, what we've been trying to do is we've been trying to make sure we can scour and get as many as we can. We've been trying to stockpile them. We're really working on some of the things that the nurses would need because they're the aspect of what a child with a fever or a bellyache or something now takes on a totally different meaning. So we have tried to procure some of those, some of those things now to at least start. If you talk about every business, if you talk about every supplier, they're also talking about there's a five to eight-week backlog, but they're hopeful for more shipments in. So at this point in time, there are, you know, three hundred fifty-one cities and towns in the Commonwealth who have schools or regions who are all fighting for the same masks, gloves, gowns, what have you. So we have good people. I trust them in a race. And we're going to see what we can do and try our best.
And, and the last thing I would add is, yeah, you kind of touched on it already, George. If, if we aren't back into the schools and we have to go remote, the infrastructure, I'm seeing how town, both towns have Comcast is pretty crappy. Going through that, I mean, seeing all these kids sitting at home still. And um, I know I have issues every now and then, ever since. Everybody's been, I'm, I'm used to being home for work and I do IT work. But ever since everybody's been forced to come home, um, yeah, the internet that they provide really sucks. And it get worse as the kids are staying home doing their work. Because I can do those metrics on my machine and it's like, some days I just want to drive back into my office just to get the um, stuff to work right.
Yes.
George, you want to elaborate our, on our infrastructure issues that will be coming up in the future or are now?
Uh, well, we have a, a plethora of infrastructure issues um, that are going on in technology. Um, dealing with the lack of onsite storage for our emails, dealing with the lack of um, onsite storage for our H-drive, which is the home directory where people could save things. We have an aging uh phone system. We have a, a, a few different projects going on to try to restructure that. But when you talk about the home environment, if we're in a remote learning setting, it is going to be incumbent upon using. You're gonna be sacrificing PPE purchases in order to get technology purchases. So we can make sure that our students and our staff can deliver a platform that is meaningful. Aside from the infrastructure and the technology aspect, we then have to make sure that we have a plan with our unions and with our principals and with our buildings. To make sure that we can offer students a me, a meaningful education in this new environment. So there, there are, there are quite a few things we're working on. Our, our tech staff is working hard on them. Right now, we're moving over to the Windows 10 environment. You know, um, on both our virtual system and on both our regular uh hardware and device system at the schools. But there will be the. Outlaying or the outpouring of funds in order to make sure that our students and our staff um, have the ability to have a sustainable remote learning plan.
Well, thank you. Just wanted to bring those up because those are, that's gonna be a big money issue and. That's maybe E and D could have succumbed.
Right. And that came up today with the commissioner also on the state level. And the commissioner um. Said that's probably gonna be a local level issue. Just.
Jesus.
He, he basically.
The state ain't getting to pay for nothing.
Yeah, the state, the, the money in the CARES Act that we're getting is what we should depend upon. And then everything should be out of the local district budget. That was, that was clear today.
I have Dawn and Fred then Ally. Dawn?
Thanks. Last week we talked about using circuit breaker 250,000, E and D of 350,000 for a total of 600,000 to reduce. Or add revenue, right, to the budget. Um, do you still see being able to apply that to this loss of 40 teachers? And second, to Jeff, I'm sorry, George's point, a meaningful education. Would that include our ELA curriculum, which would be such an important tool to the teachers, especially with remote learning going forward?
Yep. So, so George, why don't you answer the curriculum piece?
The, the curriculum piece, depending on. We're trying to make sure that that stays with us.
Yeah.
Um, depending on what takes place, depending on if you have a 112 budget, depending on if you have a 2021 budget, will be the determining factor if that takes place. I will say this, I've talked to Jeff, I've talked to Jane Cox, our elementary coordinator. If not, then we are looking at a, at. Different pieces of remote learning opportunities for students and staff to still offer E and D instruction. Because this new ELA program will be the first one since 2001 um, that we've had. So we're trying to hold on to it. But currently, in this, in the era we're in, I'm not sure what we have to hold. Uh, I'm not sure if we'll be able to hold on to it.
I understand. Thank you.
And, and I'm gonna ask John Tuffy, because I'm not sure, I, I'm just trying to answer the second part of Dawn's question. John, do you know if the commissioner will allow us to use E and D funds or circuit breaker funds? When he, when he uh sets his, his budget, if we're allowed to use anything that we have in reserves. Uh, when he uh gives us our, our, our monthly budget report?
So the E and D that, that we're talking about using, the, we have, we've informed the, the form that we fill out to send into the. Into the commissioner talks about how much E and D we used last year and how much was applied to this year's budget. So they're well aware of it and it's already taken into account. Um, and then further on in that, in that calculation that we give them, they get a sense that we, we're telling them how much we're providing local funds. So they know about that as well. Um, could we take more out of E and D? Probably not at this point in time, not until we get to a point where we. Where we're actually coming up with a, with an additional budget. Now, having said that, you don't have a lot of E and D at this point in time to use. And we have 65,000 dollars, we're gonna use um, 250,000 dollars. Um, that doesn't leave us. Our expectation is that we're gonna have some surpluses this year that will go into E and D. That doesn't get certified in, until the fall of 2020. So there's E and D, once we hit 230, disappears as a, as a funding source. At that point in time, the only other money that we've talked about in the past is circuit breaker. Um, and really, circuit breaker is. Best used to pay for those unexpected and unbudgeted sped costs, which is pretty much the definition of sped costs. You know, it's one of the few cases where when a student comes in and has certain needs, we have to make them. Um, and it's really that only, only pot of money that we have that we can use in those surprise times, as we found out in 2019.
And, and just to elaborate on that circuit breaker piece, my concern because of some, uh, because of, of the. Absence of a traditional school experience for kids the past three months, we might have certain kids that, who are special education that have regressed. In certain areas that might require more services, even to a placement or to a residential. I have already, we have a, a, an issue already at the, at, at a, at a higher level than us. Regarding special education delivery of services during the pandemic. Uh, and I foresee more. So I'm, I'm greatly concerned about. Special education in, in 2020, 21. Uh, and we'll probably see an uptake of service delivery for social emotional issues. And for academic issues because of the anxiety and, and certain regressions uh for certain students because of the loss of a traditional school.
Thank you.
Fred, and then Ally.
Uh, and uh, sort of piggybacking on that, uh, because I've heard comments made, we had million dollars in circuit breaker money to spend. And I know, John, you just alluded, 2019, we ended up with what, 600 and some odd dollars after everything?
And it's all.
So. You know, I mean, you know, it's scary to use any money out of circuit breaker. In my opinion. Uh, I mean, we've done it right now and I don't think we can undo what we've done. But, you know, I don't, I think the message should be loud and clear to anybody that we don't have a pocket of money sitting around. Uh. You know, I know it was alluded at uh, a meeting last night from uh, the Hanson Board of Selectmen. You know, that they would hope that we would be able to use more E and D money or circuit breaker money or, you know, find money within our budget. Uh. I personally just don't see it there. You know, I just don't. Uh, the other thing, have we addressed? If we're going to have to have one-time-use PPE, uh, what about the medical waste? Are we gonna need uh, you know, special dust dumpsters and.
Yep.
You know, special biohazard containers, et cetera. And all those things come for a cost. Uh. I do know where we can get masks though, 50 in the package. Uh, they are the paper type with the ear loops. Uh, and they're 38 bucks for 50 of them. So if we need to buy some, let me know. I can point you in the direction of who has them.
But yeah, Fred, you brought up a good point. That's another additional expense we don't know about. The commissioner alluded to, or uh. Uh, one of the consultants today alluded to the fact of disposable, disposing of medical waste or waste-related uh, the, the virus. Uh, they haven't come up with a, a protocol yet, but it, it's not gonna go in a plastic bag in the dumpster. It's gonna have to be somewhere else or a pickup crew or, or something like that. I don't know the expense because again. Lot of today was details to follow in the next couple of weeks, but that's another additional expense. And I'm concerned that over the next six months, we're gonna be hit with quite a few additional expenses that we have never seen before. And um, and we're gonna have to live through. So I, I concur with the use of E and D funds. Uh, I'm, I'm wary uh going into the next year. Um, even if we get uh, the FY 2011 budget passed this year, I think we're gonna be at a, a better spot. But we will have additional expenditures next year that we've never had before in any school year due to the, to COVID-19.
And they're impossible to budget for. Kind of budget for the unknown.
Okay, Fred. Uh, John Tuffy, then I'm gonna go to Ally. Fred, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I just want to make one more comment about um, about circuit breaker. And that is, at this point in time, we don't know how much we're gonna get next year. Do we know how much we got last year? And last year. Last year, uh, the reimbursement rate was 75%. Um, because of, of everything that is happening and also because of the, the budget impasse or, or. Or difficulty the state has in putting together a budget. It was last Monday, this, this previous Monday, two days ago, that we finally got the forms that we're gonna have to fill out to file a claim for circuit breaker. We and every other school in the state. And they've made some changes and we're not even submitting them until sometime in June because there's gonna be some training that's involved. They're talking about, I mean, it's a rumor, but they're talking about seeing cuts in circuit breaker reimbursements from 10 to 20%. And the idea of getting uh reimbursed for transportation seems to be a, a nice thought, but they're, the betting is that we're not gonna see that. Uh, it's subject to legislative appropriation and they're struggling to appropriate what we've seen before. And while we've gotten 75% last year and for the last few years, in my time of being involved with this, I've seen circuit breaker reimbursement rates. Range between 28 to 75%. Um, it seems that when times are difficult and the state's making adjustments. The two items that traditionally have been cut back have been regional transportation, circuit breaker reimbursement. So yeah, we're not expecting good news in that area and um, it's based on past experience.
Do you recall what the circuit breaker reimbursement was in the 2008, 2009 era?
I don't. I don't remember what the percentage was.
I know regional was somewhere around 65%. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, that's when it started plummeting and.
I've got Ally then Dan. Ally Taylor, then Dan.
Just have a, a random question that you probably really can't answer. Um, I don't understand why we would have to. Get rid of the PPE in medical waste containers. I work in a bank. We wear masks, we wear gloves every single day and it's just going in the trash. There's no, and there's no difference between the virus that we're exposed to, as opposed to the virus that you, the staff and the children will be exposed to. So why is it that stuff has to be dumped in a medically secure container as opposed to everybody else's stuff? That makes no sense to me. But I, I, I just kind of feel like they're adding more expenses onto it, unnecessary expenses onto a district. All school districts and all schools when they're already strapped for cash. That makes no sense. Is there any way that we can fight that?
I, I, I don't have an answer. I don't know. Uh, we, we just listened tonight. Just listened and rolled our eyes. So I think the gist of that though was for a nurse, a kid comes into the clinic and he sneezes all over the nurse. Uh, through his mask or whatever, and he has a temperature and nobody wants to take the risk of that going in or going in with a custodial. I, I don't know, but that was something George and I both raised our eyebrows at, like, a great, just another thing. And where's that gonna go and who's gonna take care of that? So I'm sure that will come out. It will just, it will come out. So um, but good question.
Dan Kelly.
Um, Chris Howard and Mike Jones were before me, Bob.
I'm sorry. Chris Howard, and then Mike and then Dan. Chris Howard.
Sure. So just to kind of back it up a little, Jeff. So I got the milestones and key points here. So right now we have one scheduled for a June town meeting. Town scheduled for a July town meeting. And if I heard you correctly, if we don't get those budgets passed by August, we're moving. Completely to the 112 scenario with cuts in place. Is that, do, do I have kind of the timeline correct?
Yes, I, I believe that's correct. If uh, uh, with the only caveat is if the commissioner moves us to a September school start date. When we have to start paying teachers, uh, we will not be, if we don't have a budget for FY 21, we will not be able to pay, make salary. Uh, and if, whether that's August, when he, and I assume he puts us a check August 1st for what we can spend for the month of August. Uh, under this one, 112. But you are correct. And right now, we're scheduled to start August 24th.
And the key that I guess I'm trying to understand and make sure that I think the public understands is there, there isn't gonna be more than one bite at the apple here. So there's gonna be a town meeting in each town. There will not be a time to readdress this. That, that's it, right? So that, that is the opportunity, that, there will not be another opportunity to come back again. You know, without, as Fred referred to it, the devastation having occurred. So. I think it's just gonna be really important for us as we move forward to think about how we really make sure we communicate that effectively so people understand. And it's not, you know, October 1st rolls around and people are freaking out because they're like, oh my God, there's 31 kids in my. It, there's 31 pupils in my, my child's class and a whole host of other issues. How do we fix this? It's gonna be months before it's fixed. This is, it's not gonna be a quick fix.
That's correct. So, so in, in, in normal times, if it was just a normal budget issue and we had our normal town meeting on May 4th. And one town didn't approve the budget. That would go back to the school committee sometime in May and you could reduce that number down. Uh, even if we hit June 1st and we didn't have a budget and I submitted things to the commissioner, uh, we're still under local control. And if we had a town meeting in June and that budget didn't pass, okay, you still have another shot in the month of July. Pass the budget before teachers came back in August. Uh, but realistically speaking, um, if we get a budget by the commissioner. Even if the towns pass a budget, so to speak, in October, November, we are living through the 112 scenario I laid out when we opened school. And that could be the month, it could be a month and a half, it could be two months. And then, then we go down the, the, the rabbit hole, so to speak, is. Passes the budget, how soon can we bring people back if they're available, if they haven't found other physicians? So there's, there's a lot of logistics. So Chris, that one bite at the apple during this pandemic is absolutely 100% correct. There's only one shot at this right now for both communities.
Mike?
Uh, Tupac question, Jeff. Um, back to the PPE and everything with.
In and Fred, go ahead.
Back with the um, school nurses and the testing and. And as Ally's hitting on that, yeah, 90% of the time that is just regular trash that thrown away, but there is that 10% of the time that it is going to be. And we, and, and it's a moving target right now. I get it. But are you taking into consideration how often, once a nurse is exposed to this? I'm dealing with this on a personal level at my house.
Yep.
Um, are you taking in that on, and as the state mentioned, what that is going to be?
What do you mean, if she's exposed?
Well, yeah, but how much? It's gonna happen unfortunately, but the question is, is substitution wise.
Right, because they would have to be on quarantine, right?
That, 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 there's a lot of, you raise a very good point. What happens, I mean, the question came up today. What happens when a child gets on a bus, comes to school with a fever? And then the nurse sends him home because he has a fever. Uh, do we quarantine the bus? And the word from the commissioner was no, but we're under the situation. They haven't told us what we were, what we would do yet if somebody tests positive in the school. Whether that be the class on quarantine, the teacher on quarantine, we haven't received guidance yet. All we were told to, or, or we were told is about the cleanliness of the rooms and, and if there was possible exposure, how we would have to clean the room. And, and I haven't gone down yet what that means for critical staff like nurses, uh, who are few and far between if there's exposure. Um, we'll look for some more guidance, but that's a, it's an excellent question and it's an excellent point.
And Jeff, the other second part of the question, it, you, you mentioned if this does go to a 112 budget, which it's um, may happen, is. You mentioned administrative cuts. Wh- where do you see that coming from?
So, so tough question. It's coming from non, non-union administrators. So it can be in central office, it can be building-based, it can be in operations and technology, in operations and facilities. I will speak to those people, but we would have to come up with close to 350,000. I will speak to those people, but we would have to come up with close to $350,000 in administrative cuts.
Very significant.
That's really significant.
Yes, thank you.
Dan Colletti, then Fred, then Ally.
I just want to follow, follow up on the, um, now we had voted E and D and whatever to pay for the 2021 budget of the $55 million mark. To this 112, but we're going back towards the last year's budget of 52 million. Does E and D stay where it is because we didn't vote it into that one?
And I, I think that was a clarifying question for John again. I'm not sure what we can use of the existing 605 if the commissioner sets the budget. I'm not sure if he's going to allow us to use that or not a, as a deferral to bring back some of these votes or to offset his 112. That's, uh, that we'll try to clarify with Jay Sullivan of what we can actually use of E and D that's current and that wasn't being appropriated to the, to the new fiscal budget.
And then the second, I was, kind of goes off the back of what Mr. Jones was talking about. When these students enter the school, are they going to be scanned like what they have to do into a most facilities now where you're getting your temperature checked before you're allowed into a facility?
There's a strong probability of that. That's what we heard today.
And how long is that going to disrupt the schools getting those children into, in school?
Yeah, I, I, that's a great question too. That was another, we did a lot of head shaking today, Mr. Farrow and myself. Of, we've been in schools for a long time and we've been administrators of schools for a long time.
Send you guys some aspirin.
Yeah, just, 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 yeah, thanks Ally. But, but just the fact if we have a set schedule at the high school at 7:05 and we have to scan every kid and the scanners that Chief Greno and I were talking about today, it's a three-second scan, which isn't a long time, but if all kids have to be six feet apart waiting to get in school and they're between 14 and 18, that's not going to be a great process. So what does that look like next year if every kid has to take his temperature coming in through one entrance? And then walking one way down the hallway. There's a lot of logistic things we'll be working on throughout the course of the summer. If we open school, even if we open school halftime, because we also have to come up with a remote plan that will give students an education that is similar to the one that they would experience in the brick and mortar school. So we've got our hands full, um, and, and that's why, that's why it's super important and can't stress it. I'll piggyback on Chris Howard, uh, the one shot at the apple. We need this budget to pass at town meeting more so than ever because I'm super concerned about the level of anxiety from both teachers and staff when they return in September, whether they will return in September. If they go out during the course of the year, we need to have our teams together when we open the doors. We can't be 39 people short. 39 people short will devastate. Fred talked about total destruction. I don't know what type of education we will be providing for our students. Our teachers will do the best possible thing they can. They will be forced to wear masks. They will be wearing gloves. They will have hand sanitizer. And then they're going to have 25 to 30 kids in a class, which by rule, the commissioner is going to say we can't do anyway. So the overwhelming questions that I can't answer right now is, is, is mind boggling. And I would just, I, I just, I can't emphasize enough how important this budget is for us this year. And I know it's difficult on both sides, but it's, it's really important for the schools to be intact when we open.
Fred, then Dawn. Fred, we got to move on, guys.
Very, very quick and somewhat unrelated. Can we change the start date of school and up until what time would we have to change the start date should we run into an issue?
So we, we set the local calendar. We just have to do, right now the commissioner is still expecting us to do 180 days. Where we do 180 days, we can adjust that calendar as we go. So if we want to start after Labor Day and we want to work through vacations, we can. I don't know what guidance again they're going to submit. We're looking at colleges right now saying colleges are going to start earlier and then go out after Thanksgiving break and then not return until sometime in February to minimize the amount of time that they're there. But all right now state guidelines say we have to do 180, 990 at the high school and, and what is it? 900 at the elementary and middle, George? So those are the guidelines. We set our local calendar as, as we want to.
And there's no, uh, specific time parameter, like God forbid we run into by and we've got to have another town meeting to try and get a budget done to get out of a 112. We could at that point in time set it into September. It gives us maybe a month's worth of breathing room before we have to start cutting checks.
I think logistically, yes, I don't know if, if community is going to be happy with a change of a school start date in, in August, but that the committee has, that the committee can set the school calendar. Uh, and we'd work with the association if that was to change. But, um, yeah, the, the only state parameters is that we set a school calendar and it's 180 days with 990 for high school and 900 for elementary and middle school. Those are the state guidelines for, for when schools operate.
Thank you.
Question is for WHA, Kevin and the teachers about possible remote learning next year. I've heard other towns using a memorandum of understanding. Is that something, um, our committee or teachers will be looking for in the future about any changes to their contract or learning and so forth?
Can I, can I, can I answer?
Go ahead. I, I was going to, go ahead, Kevin.
Oh, yes. Yeah. So, um, any type of change going into, uh, the new school year, I think it would be in all of our best interest to have a, a memorandum of understanding to specifically lay out and certainly with guidance from the, the state of, of all the different aspects, right? Of hours, conditions, evaluations, uh, there's still a lot up in the air. Uh, and there's a lot that, uh, I, I think we're going to have to get busy with through it, but certainly we would, uh, look to, to put something together to clarify for a certain size, exactly what that would look like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair Hayes, I'm sorry, you kind of skipped over me. Can I ask my questions?
Go ahead, Alan.
Um, Jeff, more, or for you and George, I guess, um, if there is an issue with teachers needing to be quarantined or, you know, they're sick and they need to be out type of thing, is there a way that maybe we can work in collaboration with, um, Bridgewater State and get college students who are in school to become teachers to maybe come in and, and help out and they can get like their classroom time in on substitute teaching type of thing? I don't know if that's a possibility. That was one thought I had.
I, I think if we're going to be looking at two, two things to that, not only if they have to be quarantined, we're looking at teachers that might be autoimmune, have autoimmune issues or, or be sick and not want to come to school because of the, of the, of the possibility. There was an article out today, uh, in the nation, one in five teachers aren't going to report to work next year because of the fear of the pandemic. So that's an issue we're looking at. We're also looking at parents that might not want to send their students to school next year because of the fear of, of the virus. Uh, so it's something we can look at Bridgewater about, uh, and substitutes. Um, and, and the commissioner is being very lax on licensure issues. So it's something we might have to investigate. George, you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I, I just, I, I know that we've already had some discussions with, uh, some schools as far as student teachers and things like that. I think it is a little diff, it is a little delicate this year in that sense. However, I, I also think that we should explore that because the education is now changing. It's not the same education that we had two months ago. It won't be the same education that we have in six months. We always professional educate to the next era. So I think those, we're looking into those things as much as we can for the benefit of the profession and the benefit of our teachers and students.
Great. Thank you. My next question, going back to having to take everybody's temperature when they come in. Is, is this going to be like a, a touchless thermometer? Do you know anything about that? Or do we have to have some sort of protective cover on the thermometer to take everybody's temperature? And then that would be even more stuff to throw out.
I can answer that. I went and had an eye test today. When I walked in, they hold it up to your forehead. They don't touch you with it.
Okay.
Then when I left the optometrist and went over to one of the glasses, she checked me also. And they, they make sure they do not touch you with it. They hold it up to your forehead. There are other types, as, as Jeff mentioned or George mentioned at the very beginning of the meeting, that you walk through and it can take your temperature. And again, there's probably different, all different types on the market, but as everyone's questions tonight were fabulous, and I think for all the people that are listening, it gives them an idea of how much greater the cost is going to be to the school district and how much greater the cost is going to be to the towns at a time when budgets are very, very, very challenging. So I, I know that we've got to move on, but I, I really think that everyone's questions were valid and it gives the, the people of the towns and the voters an idea of what we're dealing with from a school district point of view. If anyone has anything different, we're going to move on.
I just have one more question, if I may. Um, and you may have said it earlier, Jeff, and I just missed it. My dog was howling earlier. Um, when they do have to come in and have their temperature taken, is it just going to be the one nurse doing it? Or can teachers and administrators do it? Because if it's just one person doing it, I could, that's going to take the whole day, especially at the high school. There goes school.
Yeah, that, that's going to be a valid question. That's something we're going to have to work with WHA around because I, I don't see it in the, in the teacher's contract where they're taking, uh, it's outside their working conditions purview. And if we're cutting administrative staff as well, it's going to be a prob, it's going to be a problem. Um, I don't know the guidelines of who can take the, if they have to be a registered nurse, if they can be a paraprofessional. I don't know who can take them and write them down. Um, that's coming out, but that's another good question. I can't envision, you know, again, 1,200 kids coming through one door with one nurse or even 600 middle school kids with one nurse. They're going to have to have some assistance and I don't know how lenient the guidelines are going to be from, uh, state DPH or local DPHs of who can take the temp and then report it. Because it is kind of.
Robbie O'Brien is still on?
Robbie?
I am still on. Yes.
Robbie, uh, I know FEMA would have access to these and I know one company by the name of FLUR has camera technology that is in use in some airports where you just have a camera and it monitors whoever walks by it. And if someone has a fever, then it zooms in on that person and identifies it to somebody that's monitoring a monitor.
Are you talking about a thermal camera?
Yeah. And, and so Fred, I know where you're going with this, um, because we actually use FLUR for our thermal images on all of our engines of the FireFires have them on their turnout gear and whatnot. Um, some of the shifts have actually, we've done some, uh, testing with it. It's, it's fairly accurate, but it is not as accurate as thermometers. Um, for, um, and, and I'll be, I'll be honest, I think there's going to be a lot of changes that are going to come out from uh, DPH and, you know, that, that will affect the schools as far as, uh, testing and thermometers and stuff like that. Um, just because there's been, from where, where this started in February to where we are now, just in healthcare has changed drastically, um, to say the least. So.
No, I, I was just wondering if they would have ability for that equipment.
To get us some stuff? They, they might. I mean, MEMA has been, and, and this is the thing too, and I can only speak for the fire service and um, the police services. We've been getting supplies from MEMA. Well, again, healthcare and nursing homes and hospitals have been going through DPH to get it. The state purposely divided it up that way. Um, I can't speak for the town of Whitman, the town of Hanson, police and fire, we've made out very well every time that we've requested equipment, um, from MEMA that we've been able to get it. But we also have worked with our local vendors, um, to get stuff, which is why I want to sit with George offline because I can give him, here's all the vendors that we've worked with, things like that to try to uh, help push some of that stuff through, including thermometers and that kind of stuff. Um, so I think there's, there'll be a lot of offline discussions. I think myself, Chief Thompson, Chief Greno will have, um, with the school administration, you know, going forward, uh, once we, once we at least get through this school year and going into the summer to prepare for next fall.
Thanks. And, yeah, no, and I'm very familiar with FLUR. So I know that they, uh, at least according to, uh, their former owner, uh, they definitively have that technology.
Yeah, no, they do. They have great technology. And again, the stuff that we're using in the fire service isn't, it, it's set up, you know, for structural fires and things like that. So the stuff that we have isn't purposely set up for, uh, taking people's temperature, if you know what I mean, but there may be an avenue for us to maybe try to procure some of that to try to help out.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, Dan?
I just want to move to take the table, um, minutes off the table there and let's go vote for that.
Entertaining motion to take the minutes that were tabled off the table and open.
I'm motioning that, Dan.
Um, Mr. Small was second Mr. Colletti's motion.
Discussion. Steve?
No. Bob, Dawn had a question.
Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just want to make sure that the language is consistent. I'm not sure that it is where it indicates that the proposed amendment is contingent upon both member towns voting in the affirmative on the amended agreement and the operating budget. It's my understanding we said you can approve the amendment and it carries even if the operating budget is rejected.
You were on that call. Maybe Chris Scriven was too.
I thought we said the opposite.
I honestly don't recall. I, I couldn't answer it specifically. I think it's a good question to ask.
To, to clarify, to clarify, as, as I stated before, and I think this could be added to the minutes. I spoke about, uh, Michelle in that discussion, that the amendment can be passed by both communities and the budget may not be passed by both communities. Then it goes to the commissioner. The commissioner can either approve the amendment and use the amendment in a 112 assessment, uh, if we are in a 112. But he doesn't have to approve that, uh, amendment. If the commissioner doesn't approve the amendment, he will use the statutory method of assessment. But if the both member communities approve it, he will have the option, if he approves it, to use that method, the amendment method that we created, that we put forth at town meeting to use as an assessment methodology in a 112 budget. Does that make sense, Michelle?
Michelle?
Yeah. So just tell me what you want them to say. Do you want me to strike that and replace it with something? Tell me exactly, what we could do is we could have Dawn write what she would like it to say and then we'll just amend the minutes.
Why don't we just, why don't we just leave the minutes tabled till the next meeting till we get clarification?
Well, we don't, we don't have to. We can just say we're going to strike that line and replace it as discussed and then Dawn can figure out what she would like it to say. Or explain that.
But we're going to, but we're going to need clarification for our next meeting because I thought earlier in the meeting, we were saying the opposite.
Yeah, so that's why, I think my suggestion would be.
If the amendment was approved, uh, but the budget was not, then the amendment is gone. It, it, it's null and void. That, that was my impression of what we were saying earlier.
Yes. So I think maybe if someone amends the minutes to strike is also contingent upon both member towns voting in the firm on the amended agreement and the operating budget, then that will take care of that.
Not sure I agree with that.
Motion to table this until our next meeting.
Okay, don't.
I've got, I've got a motion to, uh, untable it.
You have to go to the untable first.
I've got the motion to untable it.
I will withdraw. I withdraw my second.
Okay. Who, Dan, you want to withdraw your motion to untable it?
Yeah, I'll untable it.
Okay. So I originally had a motion to table it and it was seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yeah.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay.
Uh, Ms. Chair Hayes, would you just confirm what that motion exactly is?
Table the minutes, the next one.
We already voted that.
So we figure it out.
It's very, it's definitely.
We already voted.
Did you get that, Michelle?
Yep, two tables.
Yeah. We'll add some chairs.
I get a chair.
I think everybody's got a chair. We've been in the chair too long. Okay. Next up, regional amendment, regional agreement amendment subcommittee. I've heard from all kinds of people, all different stories. I'm sure you have as members. At some point we need to bring this up to determine how the regional agreement amendment committee is going to move forward. If the regional agreement amendment committee is going to move forward. If the school committee is going to, as a 10-member committee, as part of their charge, take over the regional amendment. take over the regional amendment subcommittee and just become the school committee again, and then present to the towns. There's a lot going on here because there's a bunch of different people all over the place. I've gotten some calls from, and and I'm sure you've gotten some calls from. So I want you to think about what we can do. Right now, there's a proposal to both, both towns and probably, and Whitman, I think Dan voted in the affirmative. I don't believe Hanson voted yet. Um, they didn't vote against or for, they just didn't vote to see if this amendment is going to carry, and then we can see what we're going to do moving forward with the committee. But I just wanted to bring that up because a lot of, a lot of people have discussed it. Some of them were actually committee members. Anyone have any input? Chris?
Uh, it was always my intention, um, to reconvene RAC and work through the other, uh, issues to bring it into compliance. The only reason why the the school committee took over the issue with the, um, you know, the compromise, whatever, because it pertained to this year's budget.
Okay. Anyone else? Dan?
And Chris is also there, but mine, my, my, I just say, just hold off till the, um, compromise amendment goes through because otherwise it just serves the serves the issues that were there originally. Um, let's get the budget part over with, get the school back on track. We haven't done anything in 100 years for this thing anyway, so, you know, and pick it up after the summer when the school's back on track. Put them back in there and let them finish up the one or two little fine points because by then it's either the amendment passed or, you know, we got to work out the, um, statutory part anyways.
I agree. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, Bob, it's Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, I think I'm on your other screen. Um, so completely agree with, I completely agree with Dan. The only other thing I would add is, I think just the clarity, because I I did see some social media stuff. The regional agreement committee, its sole charge is to recommend to the full school committee. So that is its charge. So I think, you know, uh, if we had the school committee vote an amendment and it passed by nine one, I think that that provides some clarity in terms of what the school committee was thinking. That kind of puts that to bed. And then I think in terms of what Dan said, I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, let's kind of see how this goes. Uh, reconvening to work through it, I think is helpful, but but just so we're all clear, regardless of what that regional agreement committee recommends, whether it's in the past or in the future, ultimately, it does come back to this 10-member board that will ultimately make the determination as to how to proceed.
Agree. And I commend them for the work that they put in. They they put in some time and it's it's people that are totally 100% knowledgeable about every single thing that goes on in the school district. And they put a tremendous amount of time, and so I commend them for that. But I just, it's more of an update for future discussion. So anyone else, and we're going to move on. Okay, Whitman School feasibility study update. Jeff?
So in your packet, you will see a long document or a pretty detailed document. We're in the initial compliance certification part of the Whitman Middle School project. Um, it has to be signed. I I don't think it's pretty lengthy. It's seven pages, eight pages long. It's a standard document. This is the first time I've gone through a building project, so this is new to me. Um, but, uh, we have to have myself sign it, the chair of the school committee, and our chief executive officer, whoever that that person is, um, sign the document when the initial stage, we have a timeline to set, but the purpose for this is to have you see this document, and then we have to form a, a building committee as directed, and I know of you on this committee, I've been on building committees before. We have to form a school building committee for, uh, Whitman Middle School. Michelle, is that correct? Am I stating that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. Yep.
You agree, Michelle?
Yeah, the, um, yeah, by July one, you have to have the ICC in, and you have to have a school building committee by July 31st.
These, are these voting issues, Michelle, or just updates?
These are updates.
Okay, so we just wanted to make you aware, this came from, from our connection at MSBA. Uh, so we will be looking for people in the community. It's been challenging right now to try to think of trying to gather people for a meeting, but we will have to form a building committee by by July and have this signed off by, uh, by Bob, myself, uh, and send it off as the initial compliance fee for, uh, for the building project.
Just for clarity, when is Whitman voting on, um, the funding?
Uh, that would be a town meeting on the June 22nd. June 22nd.
Okay.
And Chair Hayes?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to volunteer, being on the high school building committee. Uh, I would enjoy being, being on the middle school feasibility study committee, and if it turns into a, hopefully, a building committee at that point in time as well.
So in the packet, it, um, in in the packet, SBA outlines the the folks that are to be on the committee? So I think that's in your packet too for your review.
Yeah, I would like to be on that committee also, Bob.
Yeah. Okay, well, Chris Scriven?
Same here.
You'd like to be on the committee too. Well, we're not going to appoint the committee tonight.
Right, that's what I thought.
So think about any, anyone that would like to be on that committee. Um, it's a Whitman Middle School building project, so think about it, and we will be appointing a committee in the very near future. But I think part of it was to talk about getting the documentation moving forward. Jeff?
Yes, correct. Okay, we just have to submit it by July 1 and then July 15, so, um, or July 31, excuse me. So we wanted to update you. It's the end of May. This thought, this stuff just came through. Wanted to get it out to you folks. Um, if possible, so you could see it, review it. Um, and then we can sign off on it and then start putting together our building committee.
Okay, any more questions? Okay. New business, public comment from the May 18th school committee meeting. I read these questions and I'm going to go through them quickly. I know that there, some of them a little bit in depth. I'll give you opportunities to answer them, but if a lot of, uh, a lot of this is stuff that answered this evening or has been answered in in previous committee, if, uh, people were watching, but I'm going to go through them quickly and give some opportunity for, uh, members to answer them. This is from Paul Benonata. Question on the budget and assessment. Why are you recommending a budget which will result in over a 12% increase to the member town's assessment? And I understand you are even recommending adding additional personnel or teachers on top of the level service budget? When the student enrollment is declining at a time when many, many people have lost their jobs and many taxpayers have trouble paying for the basics, and even have trouble paying their taxes, why would you not be looking for every possible way imaginable to hold the line and even make sacrifices and cuts? Especially for Hanson taxpayers who could be forced in an override vote due to the move of, to the statutory method. Well, I think that was pretty much summed up in tonight's meeting of where we are financially, of how, would anyone like to address this? I mean, if you listen to tonight's meeting, it addresses, we have to set a budget. Go ahead, Dawn. Go ahead.
No, just, thank you. Just a reminder of the cuts that we had last year at town meeting. So I, again, I'm repeating myself, but the district did, um, reduce staff by 19 positions already and used, using our E and D, and I looked back over records um, for the past six years, the district has used $4 million in E and D. Um, so I had asked for those figures from John Tuffy a few months ago. Um, so we've, we've done as best we can, you know, the the district even years ago, you know, we, we changed our start time. We've, you know, changed, moved from textbooks to the copy center. Um, we sacrificed our middle school foreign language program last year. You know, we've cut and cut for 10 years or more, so that's what I would say.
Thanks, Dawn. Brad?
Uh, bottom line is, we're not providing the education that we should be providing right now. And it's all because of the mighty dollar and dollars and cents. Uh, I'm a firm believer, I mean, heck, I'm the one that wanted to cancel water, you know, that says, school committee can bring their own water to meetings, which I guess we're sort of doing now, but we'll get off of that horse. Uh, but we're not doing the job. Okay, truth be told, we could use another four or five million dollars to properly educate. Okay, there was a time where Whitman Hanson excelled. Okay, you said Whitman Hanson, and people took notice and said what a great school system you were there. Okay, we had talented and gifted programs. You had Latin in the middle schools, never mind, you know, a foreign language that a children, child could take. Okay, we whittled that down to be in luck of the draw for kids to take. All right, there's a lot more that we should be and could be doing that we're not doing. Okay, what we proposed for a budget in years, we asked for four more teachers. Why? Because it made sense. Originally, I looked at them like, how can we add people? But I opened my ears up and I listened to what Mrs. Otina said. I talked to a few teachers. I listened to what class sizes were and realized we weren't doing the kids any favors by just cut, cut, cut. Okay, we have, we have an obligation to provide a child with a proper education. Okay, it doesn't have to be Harvard, but it has to be a proper education. And Jeff, George, you can chime in anytime you like, but I don't think that we're, I think you're doing the absolute best you can, but I don't think we're getting that job done. And I'll get off my soapbox.
Okay, we're going to move to the next question. Anyone else? Okay, next question. This is from Robin Bosquet. I was wondering if all of the proposals have been discussed that the regional agreement amendment committee members came up with? Since if I understand properly, that is why this committee was formed, I would think you would want their input before making a decision. I think that committee had tremendous input from them, but who would anyone like to answer that question?
Right there.
Um, go ahead.
The, the thing we just voted on, the amendment, aim for on, because the regional agreement committee couldn't pass that point. So being the school committee, we put it on ourselves, I guess, to, let's get out of the hump. Let's just get this over with. We need a budget. We can't wait for a subcommittee to clear a hurdle. So we took that hurdle out of the package. The regional school committee agreement committee is still out there, just like we just discussed. It will be brought back for the full regional agreement. We needed to get this one piece fixed. We fixed it. I think those two towns, hopefully, they'll pass it, so that we can move on with this, the education of our children. Um, it is going to go back. Those people will have input. It will be taken very highly with us, I believe. Um, it's just we needed to get rid of that one stumbling block. Just to get us to get our budget going. I think that's basically what happened.
And I think part of the issue, if I may, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak on a turn. But I think the reason, the other reason that that was done, just to kind of clarify it, was that we needed something in place for this year. It's just a fix for this year. It's not for every year going forward.
Okay. Chris Scriven?
Yeah, same as I said before, um, the, the issue with this year's budget and the compromise was particular to the budget, and and it was, um, you know, something that school committee, um, addresses, right? It, it, so the regional agreement committee still exists, will reconvene. Um, and, you know, I, we talked from, with Christine Lynch, um, got her guidance. Um, you know, i- if, if we had more time, uh, we may have gone back to the regional committee and and got more input, but um, for the sake of time, um, and and considering it was had to do with this year's budget, um, that's why we we went the route we did. And as Chris Howard mentioned, it's ultimately a recommending body, and it's ultimately up to the school committee, um, anyway.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is from Donna Freehill. On the assessment method that is being recommended by the superintendent of schools, why did the superintendent make a recommendation that would take the two towns to the statutory method completely in fiscal 20, 2022? Shouldn't there be a more gradual phase in of at least five to six years as recommended recently by the Representatives and Mass Association of Regional Schools? Or even a 50-50 split permanently each and every year between the two methods, since we are supposed to be equal partnership? It does seem very unfair to just adhere to Whitman's demands and take us completely to the statutory method. Anyone want to answer that? I think that's been, um, gone over quite frequently. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think the people that were involved with, uh, coming up with the compromise did the very best they could, um, considering the circumstances. Um, and it is a, the compromise i- is, is just that, a compromise. No one's completely satisfied. Uh, but it is a mechanism to to move forward and and make our best effort to give the townspeople a chance to, uh, you know, vote in affirmative or not.
Dawn?
I think there's been some narrative around Whitman forcing this statutory method just this year, and I wanted to clarify that this method has been available again since 1991. People haven't heard a prior recording or a meeting, so, um, this is something that could have happened last year or the year before, or the year before, had one of our town meetings rejected the budget. It could have gone forward into, um, a super town meeting, and the statute method could have been enforced. So it's not necessarily that Whitman is pushing this or that we came up with it. It is available. It has been available. So I don't know if that helps to answer the question in particular because the question did pertain to.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to the last question. It was sent from Benjamin Fletcher. On the proposed school assessments, since Whitman is operating three K through eight elementary schools as proposed only to being operated by Hanson, and from what I understand, Whitman students make up the bulk of the amount of over $2 million special needs outside placement. Should not those two important factors be taken into consideration to lessen the financial blow on the town of Hanson as you get set to impose a statutory method on the district assessment process? Thank you. That was Benjamin Fletcher. And I think that has been kind of answered, unless somebody want to go into it about when it comes to special education, how the funding comes to the two towns. Would anyone like to answer that?
Bob, it's, this is Chris Howard. I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a
Chris.
I'll take a more global swipe at some of these questions because I think, um, one of, uh, some of the questions that are coming to us almost really need to be directed to the state. Um, the state has, whether you agree with them or not, created some pretty clear regulations, um, as Dawn alluded to, in terms of what happens and how it happens. So, um, I think some of the questions around facts that should be considered, maybe, you know, how that equity-based formula is created, that is really outside of our purview. Um, we can all partially chime in and agree or disagree, but ultimately, the state has chosen that calculation. And so um, while I appreciate folks' comments, I think, you know, some of those comments really do belong more with Desi in terms of, hey, how is this calculation being, um, derived? So, uh, unfortunately, whether you agree with it or not, we have to follow the regulations and 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 requirements that we get from the state. So I think it's just important for folks to understand that.
Well, I think it's also important to understand, we're operating meetings on a Zoom where it's, it's different, where we would normally have people possibly coming into the school asking questions as we're moving along. So they, they're trying to get the input. All questions are good questions, and I appreciate everyone's answers, but I think you'll agree. Having these Zoom meetings where you can't just walk in and ask a question is probably a little bit frustrating to the people in the two towns too. So I want to thank them for their input. Next up, social educational collaborative tuition rates info. In your packet, you received an information sheet. Jeff, you want to talk about it?
Sure. So last year, um, Lauren Matheson proposed to you folks for us to join the Ed Collaborative, South Shore Ed Collaborative, and I just said it was going to entail me joining another meeting as a board member. Uh, they approved us, the commissioner approved us. The South Shore sent us their tuition rates, which will probably save us in the area between $40,000 and $60,000 in FY21 for our kids placed at South Shore Collaborative. That's a round number. Don't hold me to that because it fluctuates as far as our placements. But this is a very good thing for our school that they accepted us and the commissioner accepted us as part of the collaborative. It just gives us another opportunity for placement at the, uh, at the member rate instead of the, uh, into the non-member rate. So it's a good thing for us. So it's a good thing for us and I wanted to share, uh, what those rates are. And so just to give you, you guys can have an idea of what an out-of-district placement is. When we talk about that, and Tuffy talks about Circuit Breaker. So if you look at the community school, it's sixty-three, four, nine, four. That's, that's for the tuition that we pay and that doesn't include transportation. Circuit Breaker will only reimburse us for a portion of that sixty-three, four, ninety-four that's above, I thought it was forty-five thousand dollars. So we will receive maybe sixty percent on the twenty thousand or twenty-three thousand dollars that we spend on that sixty-three, four, ninety-four. So that's an idea of where Circuit Breaker is and what Sped costs are at for a, uh, for an out-of-district place, uh, in, in one of our collaboratives. We have kids in the collaboratives, we have kids in private placements and we have kids in, in residential placements. So this is a good thing, uh, brought on by Lauren Matheson from Sped to try to reduce costs as most, as best we can for our out-of-district placement students.
Mr. Boyce, I knew you'd have your hand up.
Yes, and, and thank you for that, Jeff. Jeff, is it, I know we talked about it earlier in the year and I'd be happy to represent, but is it a superintendent-based, like, North River?
I, I don't know, Steve, but if, if it's not, um, I, I'd make a motion from the committee to get Steve Boyce on. Is, he's a good collaborative board of directors member and it saves me a meeting, so.
Well, I, I'd certainly love to do that. Just want to let you know that with Pilgrim Area Collaborative, the, these costs here are in line with what we have. We're a little bit lower, more like fifty-two thousand, but, um, consider the E, E S Y, the extended school year. Uh, for those students that need that, um, extra sort of time and, and, and portion so forth. Uh, but I don't see any of these numbers other than that one decimal that's out of place and so forth, um, anywhere out of line and, and of course the per diem. And the rates that go further down, because each collaborative does set their own rates. Uh, we did ours, I think I've mentioned it to you before, um, at Pilgrim Theory Collaborative, um, maybe two years ago now. But we're still pretty firm. So thank you for bringing this forward, it's always good to see and looking forward if I do represent, um, doing that for the new, uh, school year.
We will find out, Mr. Boyce, if it's.
Okay, thank you.
School committee-based and we'll get back to you and then we'll take a vote of the committee.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any, any other questions about social ed collaborative? Okay, an entertaining motion to reappoint Dr. Belcher as a school physician for the upcoming year of two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. He will be our school physician. This is something we do customarily every year.
Mr. Small will make that motion.
I hear a second?
Second about Mrs. Taylor.
Okay. Any discussion about Dr. Belcher?
Hey, Bob, it's Rob, Brian. Okay, I'll let Fred go first.
Go ahead.
Um, just, just curious, who's affiliated with, is he affiliated with any of the hospitals or anything like that, what his medical group is?
Jeff?
I, I believe he's with, um, Quincy Pediatrics in Marshfield. They have an office in Quincy and an office in Marshfield. He's been our doc for a while. I don't know what hospital he's affiliated with, but he's been, he's been the guy.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is it a flat stipend? And, you know, if we ended up doing remote learning, is this something that, uh, I, I know legally we have to have a school doctor.
That's correct.
Ended up going to remote learning, how would that, you know, impact or do we, probably don't know yet anyways?
Well, I would go, I, I can say this, that he's been quite busy already with the concerns that people have with students, with staff and with reentry. So unless it's all remote learning, I think he might be actually a bit busier with us than he has been in the past.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Spires?
Yes.
Colletti?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move by Dan?
Mr. Small, make that motion.
Ian and Fred made and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes, and Chris Jones, principal. I'm putting you on notice, I'll be at the parade. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.